I need to pay your bill.
We've called this October 19 Jackson County Commission Work Session Order. Have a roll call.
District one, Mr. Weller.
Right.
District three, Mr. Bennett.
Present.
District three, Mr. Miller.
Present.
District four, Mr. Ledman.
Present.
And Chairman also present.
And former president have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Bennett.
For God, as we look around us, we're mindful of all the blessings that we have that you've provided for us, this beautiful weather and the country that we live in and this great county that we live in. As God, we're so blessed and we're so thankful for those blessings. We pray that you'll watch over us and guide us and direct us every day. Forgive us when we fail you and fail others, and Christ name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First time approval of the agenda. We have seven items on the agenda. One item regarding sanitation is in the mood and will be on the work session again in November. And then you have revised on call agreements, which is that, that was done since it wasn't mailed out the third day. So are there any other changes before we proceed? Have a motion to approve the agenda presented. Motion for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, as opposed to no. Okay, we've had one person sign up to speak, Mr. Gary Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I passed out an information sheet. I'm not going to take up much of your time on this. The last week during the commission meeting, I believe there was a discussion about e-cigarettes and the sheriff's department selling e-cigarettes in the commissary. I provided you some information on this. I had asked the sheriff if this was a tobacco product. He said no, but actually it is. And the reason this is important, you know, whatever y'all decide on, whatever the sheriff decides on, you know, that's fine. And citizens, you know, they're going to support y'all and support the sheriff until a lawsuit happens. And then, you know, this whole thing be up in the air. And that's one of the purposes of this, is numerous lawsuits on these e-cigarettes. I think y'all need to be appraised of this. And also, I've listed references on here where you can go on the web to find these references. There's several national law firms that are representing clients on this. There's even reports of batteries exploding in these things. So all is not so well as it people may be led to believe on this. So I would just ask you to consider, and if the sheriff was here, I'd give him a copy of this, but since he's not, I'll take a copy down there at the sheriff's office. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Move on to our discussion items. And the first is the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's Day. We have approved for the holidays as regularly. We approved Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and the first of January for New Year's Day. Since we are now closed on Fridays, Christmas and New Year's Day also do fall on Friday. So it would be for us to consider whether we wanted to extend that holiday next day, day and a half, or how we want to proceed. So we'll open that up for discussion. And before we do, we might consider even if we do half a day, you know, for Thanksgiving, New Year's, or maybe a day for Christmas, I think extending that day since we are closed.
We'll just do a Thursday before each, each one.
So the Thursday before Christmas, the Thursday before New Year's, and Thanksgiving is on a Thursday. Would we add any time or leave it that? I would recommend we maybe get half a day at least for Thanksgiving.
You're talking about for Wednesday or something?
Yeah. We have half a day off that Wednesday prior, but we want to do that.
I guess if people traveling, that would help a little bit. If we didn't take any of this into consideration, we would have done the budget. So this, this hour we pay is already budgeted.
Right, yeah, all the hours.
I would be supportive of doing a day for Christmas Day, for New Year's, and a half a day for Thanksgiving. I mean, we've already got, you know, considerable pay from employees. Some small, but we can deal with it. That's what I was thinking.
With that, they won't be paid for Christmas Day as it is on Friday. They'd be paid on the day that we put it on there. So you said a day for Christmas Day, for New Year's?
Yeah, and a half a day for Thanksgiving.
Any other thoughts on that? And again, if we can chew on this, we can vote on it next week. But I wanted to make sure we're prepared to look at that. So we'll look at that proposal then for next week. And if any other changes we can make there. Any other thoughts? All right. That'll be on next week's agenda. Again, if anything else at that point we can discuss then. Next item is to affirm the mapping appointment. Three months ago, we made an appointment or a transfer from sanitation department to mapping, Mr. Randy Rider. We said we were going to do it for three months and kind of look how things went with the situation scenario. Having him in mapping is working. We had four or five folks leave from that office. So this was one replacement for that. They're pleased with that. And I would request that we affirm that appointment as a permanent appointment in mapping next week. So any questions or comments on that?
Is this a recommendation of the revenue commission?
Yes. And in doing so, of course, long terrible discussions was on the agenda today will be, has been moved to November, looking at a, someone to take over ultimately for the collections and sanitation. That's what he was doing before, working on that to some extent. But we would be looking at someone that would take that on as a full-time part, which would be their replacement. So that's what we'll discuss in November. So any other questions, comments on this? Next item is regarding the animal ordinance. And I'll let Mr. Porter kind of explain. I know he had some emails back and forth to kind of explain what we wanted and where we, he thought we might know. But anyway, I kind of.
I went back and looked at the ordinance again after we talked last, last week. And you know, the ordinance just really doesn't stress this at all. There's nothing in the ordinance that addresses live trapping of animals by a landowner on his own land. That doesn't mean that you couldn't amend the ordinance if you want to, to include a statement that simply says that nothing contained herein prevents that from occurring. Now, to do that, you have to go through the quote ordinance process, which means to amend the ordinance, you got to go through the same process we did when we adopted the ordinance. And that is, after you have notice of what the proposed amendment's going to be, then you have to have a public hearing, then you have to have, give notice of the public hearing, you got to publish it in the paper, which I'm sure Mr. Glass would appreciate. But then you got to have the hearing, then you got to publish the amendment, the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance. So you can do all that. What you might want to consider is rather than going through that lengthy, expensive process, is simply to, since the ordinance doesn't really address it at all, is just adopting a resolution that says, in effect, it was not the intent of Jackson County Commission to prevent or to prohibit a landowner from live trapping animals on their own property. And then you have expressed that opinion in that statement, put it in a, you know, in a resolution form. It'll be part of the public record. If anybody ever questions, it'll be there. But it's just a lot simpler than going through the amendment or the ordinance process.
What protection would you give a landowner? So if somebody leases a piece of property for, for hunting, and it's overrun with domestic dogs or whatever, and they trap those, those animals and take them to the.
The commission was able to adopt a dangerous animal. It's not an animal. It's a dangerous animal ordinance because of the Limited Self-Governance Act that allows the commission to do that. And so we had a discussion, if you remember, I'm sure you do, that we had a discussion from landowners and hunters about animals, dogs specifically coming on the property during hunting season. And that's not addressed in the ordinance. Allowing, only if it's a dangerous animal, is it, is addressed. So I'm not sure as far as protecting a landowner or a leaseholder of land, hunting lease. I don't think there's really anything the commission can do to protect a landowner. I think that's outside of our jurisdiction. The, if it is considered to be a criminal violation, there's not really much the commission can do. I don't think you have the authority to do anything to protect it. We can simply make a statement to that effect. But I don't, if it's, you know, cruelty to animals, it's cruelty to animals. Not anything the commission.
I don't feel that we should regulate what a landowner can do on his property regarding nuisance animals.
I think I know what your intent is. I know what you're trying to do because of complaints that you've gotten and about people's dogs running loose and messing up the hunt. So I, I just think it's a stretch to try to amend the ordinance when it doesn't seem to be bad to start with.
The ordinance does say nuisance, and that is a nuisance. Is that correct?
Resolution was simply to state, like you said, it would state that we did not intend to prohibit that. That provides a little bit of support.
But still, we don't answer the question, though. It's still amended.
Is there any Alabama, on the books, I know the sheriff mentioned that livestock owners have, you know.
Take their livestock.
Livestock. But is there any laws on the books in Alabama that?
Not unless you pass a leash law. That's, that's, you know, and that's really, what you're trying to do is get a limited leash law to keep people from allowing their dogs to run on other people's property, and especially during hunting season. And so to try to finesse that into a resolution of the issue is just really difficult under the circumstances. Because you don't have, we don't, we don't have a leash law.
Now, we want to proceed. And ultimately, there is no protection against a state law. If there is a state law, I think the point on, ultimate point on this, I think, is that case by case basis, even with a leash law, cruelty to animals under certain circumstances is still applied, right? And of course, anybody may claim that if they feel like.
I don't think the county commission can give consent or basically immunity to a landowner or a land, less E, to exempt them from state laws regarding cruelty to animals, which we're really talking about. I guess I think we can do that.
Any other thoughts? Do we want to pursue the resolution? Want to chew on this some more before we figure out how to proceed?
Yeah, at the very least, I mean, I'd like to pursue the resolution stating that it was not our intent to, to let it turn.
Any other thoughts or comments on that? If you could prepare that, let's see what that looks like. We'll go ahead and place it on the next meeting, or do we want to do it on next work session?
Next work session.
Okay, so place that on the November, I think it's the second work session, November fourth. I'm sorry, November second. Okay, dink. Next item is regarding Guardian Dental. We discussed this in previous work sessions. I think there were some concerns and thoughts on this that had come up at that time. I've requested a list of other folks that are using Guardian for the dental services, and I received that today. And I need to make some calls to some of those other individuals. Also, is there anyone that would be interested in meeting with a representative from Guardian to go over this, ask some questions, concerns, anything like that, that we can do either on the phone or we can do it in the office sometimes? If you had questions or concerns, you can leave one of those also. After looking at it further, again, I did want to make sure I call some of these other individuals. We've had the vision, as far as I'm aware, we've had a pretty good response, a pretty good relationship out of the vision coverage that we've had over the past year. I think what we'll do is we will send something out to employees and see if they've had any concerns to the vision process and see how that's worked for. We'll do that this week also and see what, if any concerns have ever happened on the rest of that. The bottom line of this plan, it does save the county a few dollars, not a whole lot of dollars, but it does save the county a few dollars. And if we're getting good service, I think that it's, you know, a proper thing to do. So that's the only other thing I know to look at this week was to check on some of the service records with some of the other groups that they, they provide, and then check with our own folks and see how the vision coverage has treated them over this past year.
One thing, if I could, if they could tell us, because I'm a little confused. I thought this was a better plan when I looked at it. But I think some of the employees had.
It's the same plan that we have now. This base plan.
Something different.
Yeah, it's the employees. We've had several employees talk to us and ask us not to change until, you know, we know we're indifferent. You know, I'm going to recommend that we do that, so.
What are their concerns?
That their dentist does not accept Guardian.
As long as like one, they said, one or two in, in our county accept it, and people are having to change.
Out of the ones in the Blue Cross network, there are only two in the Blue Cross network that are not in this network at this moment. And I think that they're considering adding Guardian into their network as well.
That's what I wanted to see. I wanted to see if they could sit down and show us what's the difference.
Well, I have the list of those. As far as this, Ms. Willis has the information on the benefits and the benefits compared side by side.
I would like in the future for us to form a committee with some employees and of course yourself. Anytime we're dealing with a benefit, an employee benefit, I think the employees need to be involved in this and, and give us a recommendation. And that way, everybody's doing homework, get different folks from different departments, and let them come together and then make a recommendation.
Well, in that sense, then, I think it'd be good, like we said, to set a meeting up, have the Guardian representative come in, and we can do that.
Maybe, you know, this one, I know it's a little too quick to do it, but maybe you can get a person from, from each department to sit in on this meeting. And then we can kind of know what's best.
What about the regular employees that you had?
Regular employee.
What you're saying, maybe the boys that had talked to y'all had a concern. To me, those would be the best ones to sit in on.
Well, I'd also ask them to come talk with me, too, and, you know, see, see if those concerns or something were addressed quickly. But what I'll do, let me see how quickly we can get a meeting with the Guardian representative set up. If we're still not prepared, we may push this, you know, into November. We do need, I think enrollment actually does begin in November. So we'd have to look at timelines and things like that if we wanted to try to pursue this this year. But let me do that, schedule a meeting like that, too.
Well, we want to make it clear, you know, our job is to look at reductions and trying to save where we can. But also, you know, these employees, I, I think, on some of these decisions like this would be very beneficial to us. They'll have their input heard, and then we can move on.
Also, we want to hurt local businesses, you know. We stayed with, you know, my family stayed with their eye care provider. Guardian didn't, you know, they didn't accept Guardian, but we stayed with our eye care provider. But, you know, we've been with them for years. And I don't want to do anything to be detrimental to local business. Yeah, that's right.
We're looking, seeing what we can do to schedule a meeting like that. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like for us to talk to our individual dentists and get some input there.
I can send, I'll send you the list of which dentists are on the network. Like I said, there are two on Blue Cross that are not on this network at this time. Next item is regarding the TVA cleanup agreement. You all have a copy of a contract. We presented this at the previous work session, I believe. And the question that was asked at that time is, could we subcontract this? And we have contacted TVA, and they said that we could subcontract. There are a couple of things they wanted to make sure that, you know, in doing that, that we're not bound or whatever. But essentially, if we do it, enter into this agreement with TVA, we could subcontract to handle this and any other items that we wanted to do, as long as we're getting the job done. Now, Mr. Barnes, did you have anything that you wanted to say or add on this, if you're out of the work session?
Hey, you're just going to plead out for bidding, is that right?
Well, if, if we agree to it, we would be responsible for it beginning. And then of course, we would, if we wanted to pursue that, you know, bidding it, or however we want to go about the process. But this would, this would give us a responsibility of maintaining that. And then we could do, handle that responsibility through hiring, contracting someone, or handling ourselves, whatever way we go about.
It's good they told you, you were verbal, but the agreement does say it has to be written.
Right, which again, it needs to be, well, I've got it on an email, so. That satisfies. Again, ultimately, if it doesn't suffice, or things don't meet the requirements that we have, the agreement can be canceled. So no one's really out there thinking that for.
We're going to ask you to increase who booked it for mail.
Ask for it before we even start.
So that can be, you had to look at the map and figure out the spot.
You have a copy of it.
Two things, I had a chance to look at a little more in depth. PAGRAF 10 miscellaneous that says it will be enforced and interpreted on the laws of Tennessee. That should not be. It should be state of Alabama. I understand TVA's in Tennessee, but we're not. And PAGRAF eight indemnification, that provides that if anything happens on that premises, somebody gets hurt on the premises, then we have agreed to indemnify TVA for that.
Now, if we, if it's our own employees, I think obviously we maintain that liability. If it is a contractor and they have the insurance, would that be something we would do with the contract we employ them for?
We could.
We could officially insure it behind the public.
This, this is, if anybody's hurt on the premises, then we agree to indemnify TVA.
So that could mean just the public, somebody.
Somebody put their boat in, they fall, hurt themselves, and say.
Do we need to clarify that that's, that's only for?
The practice.
Our, our employees or employees that are cleaning the area.
It needs to be spelled out in the.
Could you, could you write that? And I can get that to TVA, see if they'd agree to that change. That would definitely be something we want to correct.
What if it was?
Unless they're going to give us.
Hundred thousand dollars would be different, but for five thousand dollars, I'm like, we won't accept that.
If they're leasing, giving the property, that'd be different. Essentially, they'd be giving us the same liability we have at Jackson County Department.
Sure.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, anything else? Any other? So those two changes. Any other changes? Anyone have concerns over or thoughts on? Would we be prepared if TVA is a manual for those changes? Would we be prepared to move forward with this next week? We want to place this on the meeting, pending those changes. If those changes aren't prepared, or they haven't accepted by that time, we can always postpone it. Does that agree with you?
It's good for me.
We'll place that on the agenda for next week also. Okay, next item regarding the TARCOG CRX MOU. You have a copy of the memorandum of understanding for the CRX program. This is about the same dollar amount that we received last year. We budgeted 20,000 last year, received just over that, and budgeted 20,000 this year. And see, it's 20,000 and 40 days. So this would be TARCOG's funding towards that program. The other large part of this funding comes, or used to come from, or I guess still receiving some from the emergency fund dollars. So those dollars are still in question. As long as we're receiving that, we can maintain the program. So thoughts, questions on this? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday as well. Okay, next item, revised on-call agreement for public works department. Mr. Campbell?
The information I provided to you, and I'll highlight some of those items that are on that, as well as some of the conversation in the email. Essentially, some of the highlights will be the coordination in changing this will be done by supervisors. And that call will go to the supervisor for leads in this rearranged agreement. And in this agreement, it will encourage a minimum lead requirements, which should be beneficial to the employee and the county. And then also, with this agreement, it will encourage two 40-hour work weeks per pay period. So that in order to receive the overtime guarantee in this on-call agreement, full 40-hour work weeks must be for two pay, you know, two weeks in the pay period. That's a full 40-hour work weeks to receive the full overtime. And this is, this is basically arrived at because due to low participation in the on-call agreement that is current. And I feel like we have to move to a more attractive option to get participation.
This kind of clarifies the process as well, correct?
Yes, sir, it does. And one, one added benefit will be direct supervision and supervisors involved in decision-making. So that should, you know, enter in a large factor that's not necessarily going on now, as well as provide some consistencies for our emergency responders when they call and have conversations with our department. There's consistency there on who they're talking to throughout this process, and it clarifies some of that.
Mr. Campbell, the last sentence you may want to add, if holiday falls within that week, a call employee must work 32 hours minimum. Because working, you know, 40 hours during the holiday week is probably going to be rarely reached.
It'll be 30, oh, yeah.
Be 32. This, that way you get it in there.
Yes, sir.
I know it's understood, but sometimes if it's not enough, it tends to cause a problem.
I guess it would technically be 31, then. Is that right?
Yours would, yours would be 32. Because yours is still on 10, right?
It'd be 40 hours accumulated by holiday.
Oh, you are on 10s. Yours would be 30.
You could put 40 hours accumulated by time work or holiday pay.
Yeah, we need some language to account for the holiday.
Yeah, we need to, just to make sure we're all right.
The on-call schedule is a seven-day schedule?
14 days.
14-day schedule.
Two-week period.
Yes, sir. It would be 14-day period to coincide with payroll period.
I think we need to look at the last item, then consider whether that needs to be modified. That's very attractive.
That, that's very well warranted, too, though, in my opinion.
A little bit of the lesson, but sort of other municipalities already offer, I think, about half of what.
It is attractive, but what you're going to do is, is get participation by the majority of the employees.
Their arrival on that, essentially, you know, kind of like you are discussing, less attractive than some of the utilities, which I, I would state that the utilities, in my opinion, that's a, that's a larger obligation. That's, that's probably a daily call-out, you know, thing. Some of the counties I've listed there for comparison, we are coming in more attractive than that. However, you know, you've had one employee, been on call for a year and a half because nobody wants to take it, and then there's somebody else they can beg and barter with to try to take it for the weekend. So, in my opinion, right now, it's, it's, it's nothing, it's, it's nothing desired, so the participation you're getting, the effort you're getting is probably similar, and then the supervisor's involvement is non-existent. So, with this, your supervisors have agreed to field the calls, coordinate the response, you know, with essentially no pay, as long as they, they don't have to show up and actually end up having to perform some work, so.
Question, what that case, they'd be compensated for?
Yes, sir.
Any other thoughts or questions? I like it.
I like it.
Be good to have a policy, update the policy too, I think there's a few questions on it. Okay, if there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday for approval. That concludes the items on our agenda, go into our court, Mr. Vanis, Mr. Campbell, you anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnes, Mr. Porter, Mr. Miller, Mr. Layton, Mr. Bedlam, Mr. Jeff.
Yes, sir.
That concludes our meeting. We do have a meeting, meditation committee meeting tomorrow at, ooh, one o'clock, I believe, that's posted. One, one o'clock. And that is posted. And I think that's it. So, with that, we'll entertain a motion, two seconds, all those that say aye, that's posted.
Where, where was the state of the state? It, it coming up tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Northeast, seven-thirty in the morning or at night?
In the morning.
In the morning.
At northeast, I'm assuming, until I see them here.
Ready as well.
Yes, sir.
Who do you use now for your, your dental?
For the, oh, dental, uh, Blue Cross.